Prolegance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You call the roll, please.
Schmuckel?
Here.
Dool.
Here.
Agustinelli?
Here.
McManus?
Here.
McCumber? She's not here, okay. Barshaf?
Here.
And next item on our agenda is public comment. If there's any member of the public who care to make a comment, please feel free to come with a microphone. If you'd be so kind as to give us your name and address. We will close public comment and come back forward for review and approval of the agenda. I would like to add one item, and that is an item for correspondence.
Is it? Okay, that's what I was going to ask you. We're going to have a public comment.
A letter to the Beta and Traverse City Housing Authority Board and Garfield Township Board, all three boards. Is there a motion? Make a motion that we approve the agenda as presented along with your addition of the district.
Support.
We have a motion and support to approve the amended agenda. Any questions or comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. All right, motion passes. Next is the consent calendar.
Is there any member of the board who would like to remove anything from the consent
calendar for discussion? Steve?
Three B, single I, general fund bills.
Anyone else? Can you remove G?
I would just claim it's the same.
B and G? Anymore? Is there any member of the public who would like to remove anything from the consent calendar? Or staff? All right.
The removal of G, can I say one thing about that or not?
When is it in discussion perhaps?
Does that mean they just, it's going to be discussed later, they're not moving it until today?
No. During no other items to be removed from the consent calendar, I would entertain a motion to approve it with the exception of the items B and G.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Dool and Agustinelli, any questions or comments? A roll call vote, please.
Yes.
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
Who am I forgetting?
Barshaf.
Barshaf.
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. We have, move on to four items removed from the consent calendar. First one is B, bills.
This might be a quick and easy question. I just ran out of time to ask you this before the meeting. I apologize. The Grand Traverse Construction Silver Lake Pavilion for the $5,053, is that from the vehicle damage to it?
I believe that's the case, yes.
Is that going to be reimbursed by insurance?
Yes.
Okay, that was my only question on it. Will be reimbursed on that.
A portion of it. We do have a deductible, but yeah, we will be reimbursed for most of it.
You shouldn't be, his deductible should take care of your deductible.
That's what I'm thinking.
It should pay the whole thing.
I'm sure we have a deductible, but then Laney, his will probably cover that, I would assume, right? Because, I mean, we didn't do the damage, right?
Yeah, no, we didn't.
Okay, that was my only question. I'll make a motion. We approve three B, aye.
Support.
All of B. We took all of B off, so.
All of B. Well, there's BI.
Bills.
B double I.
We have a motion and support to pay the bills. Any questions or comments? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Sure. Dool?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Barshaf?
Yes.
And Corn?
Yes. Next is item G.
So it sounded like the applicant might be out in the audience and wanted to make a comment. So if memory serves me correct, this was for a license involving a cooking, for cooking and stuff like that, cooking classes. So I guess I'm curious to see why a request to transfer to a Class C, which, you know, typically is for a, you know, like we talked at our last meeting, a restaurant, and it could be a restaurant and where more people can access it.
Okay, so.
Yep.
Sorry, I haven't known.
Do you have any Classes C's left?
So my name is Lisa Rowland. I own Chef Lady TC. I went to the culinary school. I spent three years going through there. I opened a business in the Chara Capital Foods building. They have some incubator suites for food businesses. Three years ago, about three and a half years ago, I opened as chef lady for seniors. It was during the pandemic. And I cooked for about up to 25 people at a time, three days a week, and delivered the meals, restaurant quality meals. So I had a big following. I would sell out quickly. After about a year and a half of, toward the end of that year and a half, a lot of my clients were interested in some of the things I was making. It was actually the muffins that I spent a year going through all these recipes. So I started having some classes for them and for their friends, and it turned out to be very fun. So I was in a suite that was 500 square feet, and then at one point, come the next January, I decided I'm going all cooking classes and baking classes. So I did that until the fall, and then the building wanted my suite because they had a food division. They wanted to break out the wall. The only one that was open was 1,000 square feet. So I made a big leap. I invested 15,000 more dollars in that suite, and I now have, I had three tables in my other room. I now have seating for 16 for classes. In the two years that I've been going as chef lady TC, I've never had an unsold ticket in a class. I've sold over 100 tickets in one day. I do roll out tickets on the first of every month. So a year ago, just last January, this year, I finally received the liquor license. I could have applied for spirits when I applied for that, but I thought, I don't want to be responsible for that, and we're too busy cooking to mix drinks or do any of that. So a year has gone by. It's not focused on drinking, but if we're having a ravioli class, someone can get a glass of wine if they want that. But the reason that I need the spirits now is if we want to make bananas foster, we can't make it because we need rum in that. If we wanted to make cherries jubilee, there's kirsch in there. So I can't use any of the spirits for the cooking if there's cognac in a chicken dish or something like that. So, but I checked with the liquor commission first, and they said there does not need to be a spirit license available. For an existing license, it's just a reclassification of the existing license. So I'm not trying to get a new spirit license. It doesn't require that by the liquor commission. It's just changing the license that I have.
So tavern?
Tavern is beer and wine.
Tavern restricted you to beer and wine?
Yes, and I, like I said, I did that on purpose, but I now realize that was a mistake because we're limited. If the liquor commission came in and saw a bottle of brandy for a, some kind of cooking, then that wouldn't be good. So I can't use those kind of items in our cooking. Or if there's Kahlua or Frangelico in a bouchtinoel, the Yule log cake that we're about to do, if we put that in the filling, we cannot. So it's used for, a lot for cooking.
Molly?
So you're not actually getting a liquor license that Garfield Township is necessarily approving, you're just changing?
Well, you have the power to say, we're not going to let you do that, but it, according to the liquor commission, I, there does not need to be an open spirit. It's just a reclassification. I don't go through the whole process again with them. If you tell me that it is approved, it may only take a month with them. So it's not the process. I've already gone through the process, all the legal things and the fingerprinting and, you know, I've already got the insurance and everything. But I have a very beautiful facility, and I just want to use it to the maximum. So it's something I should have done before, but I, I just didn't want to get into that. And we don't have time. We don't have time really to be mixing drinks, and we're not at all, I mean, a lot of my clientele, if I showed you some pictures of the classes, are, majority are women. A lot of them are, they're 55 and over, a lot of them. Some of them are 70 and 80 years old. So they're coming in to cook. A lot of people, there might be a whole class that we do where nobody even orders a drink, but it's an option. But we wouldn't be trying to have a cocktail menu because we're way too busy, three hours of cooking.
We're limited in, in the number of Class C licenses that we have, so that does not affect that?
I already have that license.
No, Class C, you don't have a Class C.
No, I have a tavern, but no, it doesn't affect that. The liquor commission told me that there does not need to be an open Class C license.
Excuse me, she was asking that of our supervisor.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So the liquor control commission was not entirely forthcoming? When they said, when they said you can get a tavern license from Garfield Township, she came in, got on the agenda, was approved, and then when we went back, we were down one of our optional licenses. So that is gone.
Question.
So that is gone, so she can't have a Class C.
She, that tavern license is essentially a Class C.
So she took a Class C for something that's not going to be open to the public, basically?
No. Based upon the liquor control commission's instructions, yes.
At the time that I got the Class C, there were two available.
But you said you didn't have a Class C.
I'm sorry. At the time I got the tavern license, there were two tavern licenses available in Garfield Township.
There were three, and after you got yours, there were two.
Okay.
Is a tavern license, Chuck, a Class C then? Under a restricted Class C?
It is one of the three options, one of the three licenses that the township had to distribute. We could have done it as a tavern license or a Class C.
Okay.
We were not aware of that at that point in time.
So when that got granted as a tavern, we found out we lost one of our Class C counts?
Correct, and it was before we even received notification from the state that we had the three new licenses. So I went online to check, and I only saw two. And I called them to ask, and they said, well, you gave one of them to the chef lady. That was.
Learning.
Learning, correct.
Learning.
So it's done, there's no going back?
No.
Okay. That's strange, I mean, I'm sure you're correct, but at the time, it was the head of the liquor commission in Lansing was on the phone with me to help me go online to find how many tavern were, and when she was on with me, there were two taverned. But you're saying the liquor commission's looking at something differently and?
Yeah.
Okay. Because the, the Class Cs have a certain number, and the taverns have a certain number.
We understand that.
Okay.
We understand that. It's just interesting the way that they.
They're one of their, they both come out of the township's allocation.
Right. It's just interesting how they kind of misguided you.
Yeah.
So basically, she has a Class C license all along?
She had that.
Tavern. Tavern license, that was basically a Class C license.
You can usually get a glass of scotch in a tavern.
Okay.
Few more questions.
Yep.
What's your long-term plan?
Just to keep doing what I teach every week. I teach every Thursday at 5:30. I teach every other Tuesday at 10:30 in the morning. And then sometimes we add extra classes if they, like the Mediterranean class that's coming up at the end of the month, sold out in an hour, so I added another one. So we have three days in a row of that. I do have a person who works for me with 35 years of baking and pastry background, very interesting background, and she is my head assistant in class, so she teaches some pastry classes. But I have, for the Mediterranean, I have an outside chef coming in who used to be the Mediterranean chef at the wine bar downtown, and I just know her from culinary school. So I'm going to have her sit in on our three classes and just help people with their cooking, so.
So is this something you plan on doing for years to come, and then?
I have a very good, solid business model.
Okay.
I'm doing very well.
And then as far as how do you advertise? How does the public know that they can come to you for lessons? How does that work?
I have a website. I'm on Facebook, I'm on Instagram. I have run ads in Traverse Magazine before. I've been in Northern Express before.
Okay. Few more questions.
Yep.
What's your long-term plan?
Just to keep doing what I teach every week. I teach every Thursday at 5:30. I teach every other Tuesday at 10:30 in the morning. And then sometimes we add extra classes if they, like the Mediterranean class that's coming up at the end of the month, sold out in an hour, so I added another one. So we have three days in a row of that. I do have a person who works for me with 35 years of baking and pastry background, very interesting background, and she is my head assistant in class, so she teaches some pastry classes. But I have, for the Mediterranean, I have an outside chef coming in who used to be the Mediterranean chef at the wine bar downtown, and I just know her from culinary school. So I'm going to have her sit in on our three classes and just help people with their cooking, so.
So is this something you plan on doing for years to come, and then?
I have a very good, solid business model.
Okay.
I'm doing very well.
And then as far as how do you advertise? How does the public know that they can come to you for lessons? How does that work?
I have a website. I'm on Facebook, I'm on Instagram. I have run ads in Traverse Magazine before. I've been in Northern Express before.
Okay.
Not sure if I'm missing anything.
No, you're good. Thank you.
And I get approached a lot by television stations and radio sta, or mostly the TV stations at different times I've had, and Grand Traverse Woman Magazine, and I usually hold those things back because we're so busy already. I don't want to, if people can't ever get in, so. And the clients set their alarms, they set their alarms. My website crashed on August 1st on ticket moment, and about 40 people messaged me within five minutes that it was showing all sold out, and.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay, on the consideration of a license classification change.
Do we need a motion on that?
We should make a motion to that effect, yes. Well, actually, we should adopt Resolution 2023-27-T.
Excuse me?
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution 2023-27-T on the consent calendar.
Thank you.
Support.
We have a motion and support, Barshaf and Dool. Any questions or comments? A roll call vote, please.
Barshaf?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Agustinelli?
Yes.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes.
Motion passes. And we're on to correspondence.
Excuse me.
Just talking about the Beta Housing Project, John and I want to make sure that there's no confusion, and that, you know, they've sold their current building, and they have to be out by September 30th. They're building the new building, and they're going to.
September 30th of next year?
Yeah.
That's already passed already.
Well, that's why I wondered if he just mistakenly said September 30th. I'm really late.
In any event, we would rather have, if there's going to be a discussion about this, we'd rather have it now than next September. So we just wanted to kind of alert all the boards that we are paying attention, and we need to get this rolling.
Yeah, because I've noticed that there's only curbs going in in that area, no buildings or anything like that. And it wasn't my understanding, right, John, that they had to have that done first before they could open the Beta?
Yes, that's what we reiterate in the letter to both Beta and the Housing Commission.
They have to be, they have to have some vertical.
Right, right.
Progress, yeah.
Right.
So they have to have structure before they can get occupancy of the Beta complex?
Right.
Should we do this one first?
Oh, we get one of those on everything, so we don't talk about them.
Okay.
If you want to, you can.
No, I don't want to, thank you.
We have one individual who always recommends we approve everything.
Yeah, so this, so I was just wondering the same thing, and I was going to bring that up tonight, so thanks for doing this, because I seen all there was was curbs there, and I thought, wait a minute, that building's going up pretty fast. I don't see any buildings going in for housing yet. Thanks, John.
You and John did a good job on getting that letter out, Chuck.
Yes, thank you.
So we'll move on to correspondence to reports. A is the county commissioners' report.
Brad Jewett, Grand Traverse County Board of Commissioners, District 4.
Lauren Flynn, District 2.
And I didn't have this on here, but since you did bring up the Beta deal, there is, within that agreement, there is the option for Beta to continue to occupy the building on Cass Road for up to three months, and there's additional language in there regards to what it retainer, if the project is not completed by that time, but I don't know if you know that or not, but.
No, I didn't, thank you.
Anyway, I have on here for tonight a few things. One, we do have a strategic planning session scheduled for, shoot, this thing is loud, for October 25th. That is a special meeting that will, that will start at 9:00 AM. This last week, we did have a presentation to us from Ryan for regarding facilities, master plan, and the biggest thing I took away from that was there needs to be a lot more homework done before we have a presentation like that again. I think it generated way more questions than answers and stuff, so as that moves forward, I'm sure that's going to evolve a little differently than what it did this last time. As most of you know, we do have a new undersheriff, Randy Foulas, was the pick for that, but that is something that came across from our, our Level 2. Last week, or I guess it was two weeks ago now, that the, the director at the pavilions had resigned, and starting tomorrow or today? Tomorrow, today or tomorrow, there is an interim director that's coming in for, to try to get things going. I just don't remember if it was the 10th or the 11th they were coming in, but I think it's tomorrow. Is it today? Okay. Anyway, sometime this week they're coming in, and hopefully, hopefully this person can rate that ship and try to get things on the right track again, so. Last Thursday, our former road commissioner, Brad Kuzinski.
Kuzinski.
Kuzinski had resigned, and right now, in the interim, they appointed Superintendent Dan Watkins to be the interim manager and everything, so I imagine we'll be hearing about some various changes there and everything, so as that unfolds, or we hear more, we'll keep you updated. That is if the road commissioner is not here to update you guys already. We have been continuing, hearing that we are working on the budget. Departments are getting numbers in, administrations getting things in and put together. We at the board level have not seen anything yet, but we're down the street, it's in the progress as it should be this time of year, so. Our agenda last week there, we also had the discussion on commission on aging Meals on Wheels. They were asking for additional funding to provide that service, which that did get approved. That funding does come out of their millage money.
I also just want to say that I had the honor of doing a ride-along for Meals on Wheels right here in Garfield Township, and it was one of the most uplifting, heartwarming days of my entire life, so it's a really great service that we offer our constituents.
That's what I have on my list. I'm sure I forgot a couple of things. The last couple of weeks have been kind of a whirlwind of a lot of things going on, but as I remember them, I'll put them down on a list and bring them to you guys next time, so.
I just have two things. We recently heard that the GT County Parks received a Spark grant of $995,000 to specifically fix the track around the Civic Center, so that's a really exciting project. I know I use that a lot, so that's exciting for me and I hope a lot of other constituents. And this Monday at 9:00 AM, the county administration is going to be starting to do coffee hours throughout the county, but we're starting here, Monday, 9:00 AM, right here in Garfield Township.
Here in the hall?
Yep, that's the email I received.
I'll show up for free coffee.
I had no idea.
I guess she'll be kicking out whoever. And that, that whole, that whole idea of the coffee hours is to allow constituents to come in and talk to our administrative team and commissioners and ask questions, something that will be much less formal than when you're in front of a commissioner meeting or anything like that, so. Anyway, that's what I have.
Coffee.
Yeah, free coffee. Come on.
So we'll see how the turnout is and everything, but with that being said.
Yeah, how is that being publicized?
That's a great question, and I'll find out for you, because I know that we were sent an email, but I'm not sure if it's been sent out in a press release.
Our email came to us last night at 10 o'clock. If that tells you how much we knew about it before today, so.
That is true.
Because I'm sure, I mean, this is the first we've heard about it, and anybody in Garfield Township that wants to talk to the administration.
That's why I kind of wanted to say something for the people listening at home.
So that's, now we have all you guys to help word of mouth spread it and everything, so, but anyway, I am.
Where?
I am going to head to.
I don't know the exact room, it's here in the Township Hall.
I am going to head to Blair Township, but does anybody have any questions or comments, anything additionally?
Who are you asking?
If not, like always, and I'll just state it again, my contact information is on the county website. Feel free to reach out at any time. Please, if you do reach out, try to give me up to 24 hours to respond back, because I do have other things that go on in life besides this, so.
Oh, no.
But usually I get back with people quite quick, so.
You can reach out as well.
Yeah, thanks, everybody, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You.
So you were aware of the coffee?
Yeah, yeah. I got a call from the county administrator who asked, and I said, yeah, I'd certainly be happy to do that. And then we went back and forth and missed each other several times, and I said, just call Kathleen and see what dates the rooms are, the rooms open. And it was done.
Okay.
And here we, and it all happened yesterday.
Okay. Kathleen wasn't here yesterday.
Huh?
Kathleen wasn't here yesterday.
She was in the morning.
Oh, well.
Hello.
Okay.
Moving on.
Moving on to the sheriff's report.
Nope.
Nope.
Oh, I don't, she talks to him. Oh, come on up, Jennifer.
Oh, oh. He just wants to skip right past you, Jennifer.
I know. Jennifer Graham Gordy Frazier, in your packet, you have our construction report. Few highlights, Booster Station, I am wrapping up, because I do, still on schedule with the growth down Cedar Run Road, we want to get that out for bid, so hopefully we can get some responsive bidders early this winter yet. So I am very close on finishing that up. Speaking of Cedar Run, all, the project you guys accepted, I think last month, all the grant reimbursements have been submitted, and so that's very exciting to have that project fully grant funded, whether it was through Eagle and County ARPA. So those reimbursements have been submitted, so I appreciate your help on that. Couple other noteworthy things, been working, assisting planning department on some capital improvement project costs related to trails and water and sewer infrastructure. River East Phase 3, we're putting out for bid this month, so that's very exciting, and hope to be to this board next month to present the bid opening results on that aspect. Winter is going to be here at some point. I know. I did hear it snowed in the U.P., so. But, uh, so a lot of the contractors, yes, are at last dash, working, Beta facility, we're working through punch list items to get that component, um, ready for you guys to accept. South 22, they've probably got about 60% of the sewer installed. I think they're gonna wait till spring to finish up the water main, is what they're telling me. Burmley Hills is done utilities, so we're, and they're moving over to Burmley Meadows. We just got those Eagle permits, so that's exciting, and then keep Elmers in the same, uh, block. And we're continuing to provide full-time inspection for that. Same thing, TC Hammond. Um, they're doing some hydrants and service lines that we're providing inspection for, and then same thing with Britton, so just some wrap up on projects. Few stormwater reviews that I have on the list, and then I think last but not least, before the end of the year, I finally got all the comments back from DPW related to our technical specs for water and sewer, as it's been our goal to have, started in 2022, um, but in 2023, to have in front of this board, probably December, January, um, a final 2023 specs for this board to adopt, and that's just accounting for industry standard updates, field updates, any technical errors, clarification, so we'll have that along with a memo that outlines that for you guys to review. But I will entertain any questions you guys might have for me.
On the Beta project, um, the housing project that Beta is on.
Yes.
Located on, um, the infrastructure is in the streets on the residential part, is that true?
No.
Have they, what have they?
They've put in about 50%. For the first phase of the housing, it would be the southern. I guess if we're looking for comparison, the.
Closest to.
The closest to Beta. That's the only water and sewer infrastructure. There's still interior, internal piping they have to install yet, and, and I've segregated that out, so when you guys see the closeout packet, it'll be identified what still remains and outstanding, that is part of the TC housing piece.
Are they in communication with you about a timeline on that?
No, I have not heard a timeline. Um, I asked for one, but I have not, and I, and I'm not sure who's managing that piece, if that's Cunningham Limp, that's also part of that, maybe Chuck. I don't think they are, and I don't know if TC Housing knows one, um, at the moment, as far as the timeline. So.
If she's done.
I'm done.
Um, Francisco's, I was in there yesterday, and they asked, where are we at on getting their stuff run? And I'm like, I don't know, I'll find out.
Yeah, so I'm still consistent with the construction report. We put it out for bids. I didn't get any bidders. I reached out to contractors. They didn't have any, any ability to fit it within their schedule. I filled in, um, the applicant, the owner of Francisco's, to let him know, and it's our timeline. I mean, we're gonna put it back out for bids in December.
Okay.
That's the best, I mean, I can't help it when people don't bid. And I reached out to, you know, the typical players, and they just don't have it within their schedule to work for, work within it this year, so, um, they assured me that they would, they should have availability in the spring.
Chuck, how does that work if that, when the bids do finally come in, and the bid number comes in higher than the allotted funds? How does that work?
The allotted funds were not going to cover everything. That was always a fact.
Okay.
It's a, it's a contribution towards the project, but the.
The balance is theirs.
The balance will be by the property owners.
Okay, okay.
And we, we did move as quickly as we could. Once, he had some issues with deeds and restrictions in terms of what he could do on the property, so as soon as he said, go, we went. We got the application into the Eagle, and they approved it, and then once they approved it, we went out to bid, so it wasn't anything on our part that slowed them down.
And that's what I told him. I told him that I thought you went to bid and got no response, and you were gonna go out again, and if I see him again, because we're down there three, four times a week, I'll tell him you're gonna go out.
Is it Adam? Yes, and I have emails with him that I've communicated, um, just to be fully transparent, transparent on your behalf, and, yeah, because we went out for bid, oh, shoot, early September? I mean, it was quite a while ago. There was time, but, you know, we have pretty limited resources here, as we know.
Yeah.
With contractors, and that is kind of a challenging, it's a busy area. We'll put it that way.
Yeah, I told him you were probably gonna go out again early winter.
I said the same thing, yeah. Thank you, Steve.
Okay. Surprised he asked that, because he's the one that asked me the question if he's in an email chain with Jennifer, but.
Always ask somebody else.
Well, you always say, you know, mom says no, you go to dad, I, you know. I know how it works. I understand that, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Jennifer?
Thanks, Jennifer.
All right, appreciate your time.
Now, the sheriff's report. Sorry you had to wait.
Just wait his turn. Congratulations, by the way.
Thanks, thanks. Uh, Roy Rasko, Grand Traverse County Sheriff Department. Um, I've spent this last month mostly dealing with recruiting issues, smashed vehicles, injured employees, and scheduling problems. Uh, just to start off, Roger Grodefent, uh, probably haven't seen him out here much. He's been away at a two-week school, uh, where he's studying accident reconstruction. It'll be a great asset to have Roger back here in a couple of weeks, um, to work. One of the other Garfield Township officers, Jessica Henges, is also in accident reconstruction, and so we're finally getting a good team that can put these, uh, major accidents back together for us. So Roger will be back in a couple of weeks. Brad was injured on the duty. Brad Kirkpatrick, he's back, um, with no restrictions again, thank goodness. And then Mike McCowsky's still out. And Amanda Peck is still out. George's last day is tomorrow.
Oh.
So George Preston will hand in his stuff on Thursday, and he's retiring, so. Won't see George out here anymore after tomorrow. And Steve Gore, um, is a deputy that put in for the Garfield Township spot, and got that spot, and he'll, he'll do a great job. He has 16 years on with other departments. He's been here for a year. Um, he'll fit, he'll fit in well. Up here, he's fast-paced and likes to stay busy, so it's a perfect spot for Steve. With Mike McCowsky being in the schools, we've decided, um, to move Deputy Henges into the school. We thought we'd get away with being down this much, but the, it was pretty evident that the school had some issues, and I was getting text messages, emails, so we just decided to put Jessica out there, and if, if anything major happens, she knows that she comes to the road and can take complaints still, but as of now, Deputy Henges is at, um, TC West.
So is she taking Mike's spot then?
Just temporarily.
Oh, okay.
Mike is, starts light duty tomorrow.
Okay.
And so he'll be back in the department, but still can't be out and about taking calls in, in the school yet.
Okay.
So Jessica will step in, and she's fit in well, and everything seems to be going good having her out there. I joke, but I didn't realize that all of the major tow companies are in Garfield Township, which, um, salvage vehicles, abandoned vehicles, take up a lot of time. So I've been working on that and trying to be a little bit more proficient with those. Stats are pretty consistent. Again, Garfield Township, between personal injury accidents and property damage accidents, there were 75, and the total of accidents, including traversity, uh, for the month was 222 and 75 of them were in Garfield Township. There was 20 OWI, or operating, drunk driving arrests, six of them were Garfield Township, and, um. That's about it. Do you have any questions?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks.
We have any addendums from our, uh, Sheriff?
No, I just can introduce myself.
Oh. That'd be fine.
That would be wonderful.
Good evening. I know most of you, but some of you I don't know, Commissioner. My name is Mike Shea, recently appointed Grand Traverse County Sheriff. Just wanna let you guys put a name with a face and vice versa. Let you know if you have any questions, concerns. My number that is on the website, as well as what I will give you in a minute, is my direct line. If you call it, you will get me or my answering service. I will call you back as soon as I can. So, my number, if you need to get ahold of me, 231-995-5015. And certain people have my cellphone, which I won't mention. Anyhow, if you have any questions, I can entertain them right now, but I just really wanted to just say hi and tell you who I am. Questions?
Thanks, Sheriff.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out. Okay, we'll move on to the Planning Department report for October 2023.
From where?
Oh, GT Metro report is in writing.
Okay. You're skipping things today.
You can read it. You want to read it out loud?
No.
Then we'll move on to the Planning Department report.
Good evening. Uh, you have our report in your packet. Just wanted to highlight a few things. Uh, development reviews. We have an introduction tomorrow evening at the Planning Commission meeting here, uh, for a commercial district housing development, and this is a proposal for, uh, located at 366 North Garfield Road. This is at the southeast corner of Garfield and Dual Road, right next to the car wash. There used to be a landscaping business there. So the commercial district housing allows, uh, for multifamily in our commercial zoning districts on a limited basis, uh, and does have certain provisions for that. Uh, so that's an item that the Planning Commission will be looking at. Uh, they'll also be meeting later this month to continue work on the master plan. They're right now going through the, reviewing the future land use map, also looking at areas where there can be, um, supporting any type of future road connections within the township, and looking at some areas for, uh, mixed use. Uh, the, in your, uh, packet, uh, coming up in, uh, let's see, next month will be the rezoning, uh, excuse me, zoning amendment to the ordinance, uh, for the R2 and R3, uh, districts, and that would allow for better options for duplexes and multifamily, uh, buildings in the R2, which is already our, our two-family district, and the R3, which is the multifamily district. And then finally, uh, the other week, we had a visit from the, a representative from the Michigan Department of Natural Resources in terms of our trust fund grant application. They were on site and walked, uh, the site. Uh, we've got preliminary score, uh, we received so far a 365 out of 500, and we're trying to hopefully get that higher, uh, so that we get our grant for that particular project, which is an accessible loop trail that would go essentially around the, the lower part of the park, though, kind of the wetland area. And so that's about it for our report this evening.
Any questions for John? Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Thank you. Thanks, Jen.
Next is the Clerk's report.
No.
No, I think it might be the parks and.
We don't want to hear him.
He's got his mind on it.
Oh, come on in.
He's got his mind on that free coffee.
He's just missing every other one.
Sean Keogh, Township Clerk? Uh, Sean Keogh, Garfield Township Parks. Um, just, you have the parks report in front of you, so we'll just highlight a few quick things on it. Uh, Silver Lake, the, uh, cracks and outer loop have been both repaired and sealed. Uh, they did a really nice job on that, so people are happy with that. Uh, moving down to the Commons, as John mentioned, we did meet with the, uh, DNR official on the grant application, and, uh, we also met with Copper Ridge staff, um, about a potential trailhead behind the Surgery Center, and County Denewith is going to be checking with the Surgery Center. They brought up another option that we didn't originally consider, and that is just extending their parking lot out, basically one row, um, just before the retention bonds there. So there's some play with that, that we gotta figure out if that's a possibility or not. And then, um, ECT did conduct a wetlands delineation at the Commons, um, and John has forwarded us a report on that. It's a very, very thorough report. Um, they were out there quite a while, that eight or nine hours that day, and, uh, we were pretty impressed with what they, uh, what they seemed to know in, in terms of, uh, that report, so. The carcinite posts for the, and the signage for the mountain bike trail are sitting in my office, and, uh, Chris Remmy is going to make plans with Derek next week about picking those up. They're doing a work bee on, uh, October 22nd, I believe, to, uh, install those on the mountain bike trail, so that, uh, those trails are, um, marked by the end of the month, and then they get a lot of activity out there before the, uh, Iceman, so, um, those trails should be marked and good to go for those guys that want to practice out there for that. Uh, Forefront was out there yesterday and did a cleanup, so that's looking good out there. Uh, River East, as Jennifer had mentioned, um, the next phase is, is all being looked at, and, uh, Derek and I are replacing a couple old boardwalk, um, things out there that are, probably won't survive the winter, so to keep the trails accessible to people. Uh, the dog parks out there look great. The grass is really growing, it's still growing, um, but they look really good, so that should be ready to go for next year. Boardman Valley, uh, we secured a lot of, um, posts at a discounted rate from the Conservation District for, um, some repairs to some of our platforms and, uh, viewing guardrails and so forth out along the river. They're, the old ones are starting to fall apart, so, um, as soon as we figure out how to get all that material down along the river, then we'll start in on that. Uh, Miller Creek, uh, we've just been repairing some old boardwalks through there. The, uh, CPO has helped out with an encampment, um, back there that ended up in, uh, some recovery, I think of some stolen property from Walmart. So again, we'd like to thank, uh, Roy's crew for continuing to support us with the, the encampments. I think between their group and what Derek and I have been doing the last year or so, the encampments this year have really been down inside our parks, so that's a plus, and, uh, we're hearing, hearing about it from the public. They're, they're enthusiastic that they don't have to worry in some of those situations, um, like they do in other parts of our community. And congratulations to George. He's been a big asset for, uh, for helping us with those encampments, so we both wish him a good retirement. Buffalo Ridge Trail, uh, Tart has been down there with some volunteer groups, uh, starting to remove some autumn olive bushes and, uh, helping us out with those invasive species, and that is it. So, any questions from you guys?
Questions for Sean?
I got one real simple one. Last year, you and Derek and I met out there about mowing the hills for sledding.
Mm-hmm.
If I get time yet this year before the snow flies, last year we ran out of time. It hit in the stage.
Yeah, we can revisit that, sure.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
The Clerk's report.
You're gonna go to the supervisors?
Yeah, I was thinking about it, but you never give a long report like they do.
I don't. I submitted the Clerk's report in writing. Are there any questions? We've been a little busy. Uh, TCAP's informed us that there is a good possibility I will not be able to use the Saban Data Center for my Precinct 3. They sold the office downtown and are hoping to be under construction, so I'm looking for a new site for Precinct 3 to, for the elections. Yeah.
It might still work, but.
It might still work. We're still trying to work it out.
No guarantee.
There's a possibility. We won't be able to use it.
There's that church across.
That's what I was just thinking.
Well, there is that church across, is the.
They have a gym in there too, don't they? They do.
Yeah, but you have to ask them, and we have to work things out with them, and then notify every one of the people in Precinct 3 by mail. It has to be by mail, and.
Send them new cards.
Send them all new cards, and, uh.
When will you know if it's possible that we can still use?
She's supposed to meet with the architect this week and is gonna get back with me.
Can you have it at a microbrewery?
Nope, nope, it has to.
It's the only bigger building I can think in that area.
No, no. Actually, the, the Y, the Y is in, um, Precinct 3, but I don't know, you know, for August, and they have the kids in there, so I'm looking. Has to be a public building. It has to be, uh, handicap accessible, and I mean, there's just a whole gamut of them, yeah. We're looking, hoping we can still use the Saban Data Center, but.
I'd like to keep you hopping. Any questions for Laney? Supervisor's report. I think everybody's aware that, um, Chief Parker has tendered a resignation, um, effective the end of March, so he's given us six months to find a replacement. Uh, we have, um, contracted with an executive search firm who is, uh, starting the process, so we hope to have them in here in time that they can spend at least a month working with Pat to transition. That seems to be going well so far. Uh, went to the grand opening of. Went to the grand opening of the village at Lefranger Woods. Their first building is done.
I missed it. I was there.
Yeah. It was a very nice, great food, free coffee.
I didn't go out and eat, so I don't know about that.
I had a meeting with the regional manager for the mall, and they have a new local manager who's in the mall here, so they are focusing more on trying to get this mall back on its feet. It was a very good conversation. I was not overwhelmed with optimism, but I feel better.
Were they happy about the restaurant going in there?
Um, yeah, we didn't talk about that.
Oh, okay.
We talked about some areas where we could work together, like a driveway that connects Lowe's to the mall through all the businesses along 31 there. Like I said, it was a good conversation.
Were they receptive to that?
I think so. I think they're interested in knowing what their expenses will be to maintain it, so we have to... I think we have a rough draft of that plan. We just need to polish it up a little.
Great.
Good. Traffic is business.
That's what I thought. Yeah, that's what... It kind of stunned me when they rejected it. Attended the board meeting basics program at the Government Center. Molly was there, and the board's attorney gave the presentation. He did a nice job. Brought up a lot of things that I hadn't heard before and some changes in the law, and it was a good program. We got good news. We have a estimate for Blue Ridge, excuse me, Ridgeview Court.
Yay!
So, we can get the final petition out and get the signatures we need to get that process going so we can get it on the agenda for next spring.
Nice.
And I bought some lottery tickets because it's $1.73 billion.
Okay, yeah, right. When's the drawing?
Thursday night.
So, you won't be working Friday, where you're off anyways, right?
Well, we have a pool here at the office, so there might be nobody here tomorrow.
We got to share with all.
Is it tonight or Thursday night, the drawings? Tonight?
Tonight.
Is it tonight or tomorrow night?
Oh, it's...
Wednesday.
Is it Wednesday? Okay. You got time to buy tickets.
Okay. So, if you have any business coming tomorrow, because they might not be here on Thursday.
Any questions other than ticket availability?
Good luck on the Mega Millions.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Or Powerball, whatever it is.
All right, we will move on to new business. Number one is the public hearing and consideration of amendment to the Grand Travers Commons Development Regulations Resolution 2023-28-T. Mr. Syke?
Yes, so this is an amendment to the Grand Travers Commons Development Regulation, so it's essentially the zoning ordinance for the Grand Travers Commons. And this was a recommendation that came from the Joint Planning Commission, which consists of both the township and the city, that govern the land uses for the commons. So, this was based on a petition that came in front of the Joint Planning Commission that would help to support the reestablishment of the center administration building for Building 50 that would merge with what has historically been most of Building 50 to be the historic view and look of the building, with the center administration building, which was done in the 50s or 60s, is kind of that low, flat building. This development regulations needed to be amended to allow for the restoration of that center portion, and there are two parts to the amendment that's being proposed. There's one part is the definitions, so it's basically to allow this to work better with the roof types that are there, and basically allows for this one portion here in terms of how it's measured, and it's basically allowing for the exception for the types of roofs on there that would allow the measurement to go from the grade to the highest point of any roof type, regardless if it was gable roof or mansard or flat roof. The other... So, that's in the definitions, and then the other part is referencing an exemption in terms of the stories, so that in terms of the building height, doesn't have to be measured by stories. In the case of the historic center's administration building, there exceeded the number of stories than what was in the provision there. So, that was an oversight when the development regulations were allowed. And just so you know, that these are regulations that are specific for the sub-district area. So, the basically, the development regulations is different than our zoning ordinance in that it's really recognizing the existing buildings and then just managing the uses in there. So, this is, these exemptions or these alterations to the development regulations specifically only apply to Building 50 and not the rest of the commons. So, it's a little bit different than our ordinance.
And it'll give us the ability to rebuild the historical look.
Yep, absolutely.
And the drawings are beautiful.
Yeah. All right.
Make a motion if you...
Wait, you have to do a public hearing.
One quick question for John. Can I ask before the public hearing?
Certainly.
John, the spires that are on the tops of those, are those exempt from height?
Correct. So, those wouldn't be part of the building. Those are certain, like church spires.
Decorative?
Correct.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
It might even be non-conforming.
Right.
Any other questions? All right, then we will open the public hearing. Anyone would care to speak to the proposed amendment to the Grand Travers Commons Development Regulations? Please come to the microphone and be so kind as to give us your name and address.
Hi. Raymond Minervini with the Minervini Group were the applicant for the amendment. John did a great job of explaining it. What this is trying to do is establish what is the limitations that we could build a historically appropriate replacement building for the center administration building. This fixes some things that were not executed properly the first time around, and it also helps clarify the building heights, so we can determine, is it possible and is it feasible to replace the center administration building, which the state tore down in the 60s? And so, as we look back at it on the front lawn and admire the expanse of the front of Building 50, it is a beautiful smile with like two front teeth knocked out because there's this building that never should have been put there, and we just want to see if it's someday feasible, and this would be a first step toward that approval of these amendments. So, thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment? All right, we will close public comment and come back to the board, hopefully for a motion. Molly?
So, a question. So, these changes are specific to Building 50? It's not for everything else that's on that?
Right. So, there's different districts within the development regulations, and this is specific to Village Sub-District Three. So, if you opened the development regulations, you would see a line, and it would show you where that district is, and it's basically the Building 50 envelope.
So, not the other buildings that are there?
Correct.
You won't be able to put a tower?
Yep.
I would like to make a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
That we pass Resolution 2023-28HT, adopting Amendment Number Three to the Grand Travers Commons Development Regulations, including proposed amendments to Section 1.09 and 5.15 be adopted.
Support.
We have a motion from Schmuckel and support from Barshew. Are there any questions or comments? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Barshew?
Yes.
Augustineelli?
Yes.
Duell?
Yes.
McCumber? Oh, I'm not here. Corn?
Yes.
Did I miss anybody?
McManus? Yes.
Something in the air tonight.
I know.
Motion passes unanimously, so we're good. Next is consideration of proposed ARPA fund allocation, and this is Chloe's pet project, and she can't be here, so she was very sad.
Aww.
She's at the Treasurer's Symposium.
This is awesome.
Yeah.
This is really, really good.
Yep. So...
The signage.
If we're still open, you know, if somebody has any suggestions, but we've talked this over with John and Laney, and we're feeling like these are the most deserving places for us to use the funds.
So, Chuck, we have a column that's estimated cost and a column of ARPA budget.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Okay.
Right.
I think this is great.
So, what was Chloe saying about the signs, John? We proposed so much for it, but it was actually less than what we proposed?
Yeah, it was significantly less than what we anticipated, so that was adjusted.
It's been adjusted in here? Okay.
Yeah, so it's a lot, it's a lot lower.
Loan commission guys would let us do really nice signs.
Yes, and in the forbage over here, it says they will each cost $1,500, but in the spreadsheet, it's we're going to get 17 of them for $5,200.
Nice.
And this is just a draft at this time, and some of these numbers have to be ironed out a little bit more and flexible. It's just kind of the general gist of what the, you know, what would be good for the board.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, on these roads, that is our amount that we pay for the road?
Correct.
Okay. And I know we had talked about, I wasn't at that meeting, but you said they had talked about using ARPA funds for water on those roads also, and some of the roads?
Uh, no, I don't think that was in there. The water is, you know, it's funded. It's funded, it's sold.
So, I guess what I'm asking, so like if we go ahead and do my road, are you going to be putting water in there also?
We will put pipes there, yes.
Okay, okay. Thank you. That's the question.
Yeah, it just makes sense. When the roads all turn up, it's much cheaper, and it could even save some money on the road project.
You just want more of my money, is all, right?
All we can get.
So, just looking at this sheet, we have the approximate amount, and it's much higher, almost a million dollars higher than what the ARPA funds are. Are we doing the first column of them, or are we just doing the ARPA fund column? Total budgeted per type. Am I not reading that right? The first column is $2,833,95, and that's everything. Then the second column on that is the budgeted per type, $1,864,273, which is the ARPA funds. So, are we, are we doing the first column, and we're going to make up the difference?
We are, we listed the first column so we would understand what each of these projects The second column is for the funds that we, through our percentage, had at one point allocated or had a tentative allocation.
Right.
I think we just want to see or get a nod from the board right now that we're on the right track.
Okay.
And then we can zero in and decide. We have money in the road fund, you know? We've always tried to keep a good balance in there, or in the case of any special assessment projects especially. The parks has some... It's not like any of these are needing every bit of it, but we can, we can make those judgments if you feel these are, we're in the right place, we're on the right track.
I think it's the right track.
I do, too.
I really do.
But this list of things are things that the committee believes are things that need to be done, and are we thinking that we are going to do them all and use other funds from different places, or?
I think so. At some point in time.
Yeah, okay.
They're all going to get done, and we, as I said, we can accelerate them using the ARPA funds.
To get them moving.
It will be, we know where we're going.
Don't we have a timeframe if we get this done by a certain time? We get state additional funds?
Yeah, so that. It turned out that that's...
Only for cities?
No. It's 1% of the legislative money that is, you know, there's a constitutional sharing, which is the primary funding for our township, and then there's the legislative, which is a minute amount, and it's 1% of that.
Whoa, that's a whole bunch.
So, it came out to believe, I believe it was like $650 is the bonus for...
Wow, we better get on these.
We all appreciate her efforts, and she realizes now that it's still a good thing. I mean, we should get moving before our dollars are worth even less.
Absolutely.
I think it looks good.
Is everybody comfortable there?
Yes.
Right. Very good. We will move on to consideration of a modification of the contribution for the Blue Star Special Assessment District. You did leave a sheet on your desk that shows a plan that we came up with. There were mistakes made on both sides. We made a mistake in doing our calculations and forgot to, we included a road commission 25%, even though they had passed, when we started this project, there was a 25%, but because it took a little while, by the time we got done, they would only cover the soft costs, and the calculations that went into the program used the 25%. So, we were off significantly by that, and then the fact that we pushed it to get it ready last September, a year ago.
Right.
And we didn't actually get a bid until this September. We felt that the road commission should share in the pain.
Mm-hmm.
So, and the residents of Blue Star are, you know, we're maxing out the assessment because we can go up to 10% over, so they're giving, and they're, we're grateful for that. The road commission has already approved giving 13% or, excuse me, 6.5%. And that brings our total up from 25 to 31.5%, but it's essentially sharing the pain. So...
So, we're sharing it rather than having them do the...
So, we want to increase from 25% to 31.5.
Can we do that? I thought we only could go 25.
We have nothing. There is no law, there is no policy. It's always just been practice.
Oh, okay, okay.
So, when we started digging, we, and I think we might want to adopt such a policy in the future, and the road commission has their own policies, and they have graciously increased their contribution, and I would like us to do the same.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
So, you would, would you need a motion that we increase ours to 31.5% on the Blue Star project?
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to make a motion that Garfield Township pay 31.5% on the proposed Blue Star Road Special Assessment.
Support.
We have a motion from Schmuckel and support from Steve Barshew.
Steve Barshew.
Steve, Chris?
Yeah.
Give it to Chris.
Little discussion, just so are we thinking about making a policy and going to 31.5% on our roads, or we're doing it in this case because of the inequity?
We're doing it in this case only because of the inequity and the fact that we don't have a policy, so...
But are we moving toward...
I think that we will adopt a policy probably at our next meeting.
For 25%?
At 25%.
Because that's, 25% is still generous. There's no other township that does that.
But if we adopt that policy or something like this comes up, we can still change it?
We can override a policy.
Okay, good. Okay. I just want to make sure that we can override it because of a situation like this. Well, it's not their fault.
I don't think this will ever happen again. It was a storm, perfect storm of circumstances that got us here.
All right.
So, we have a motion, and second, any questions or comments? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Barshew?
Yes.
Augustineelli?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Duell?
Yes.
And Corn?
Yes. Motion passed.
When is this going to happen?
When is it going to happen? When is it gonna happen?
Yeah.
They are hoping. Almer's had indicated that they thought they could get it in the end of this year, and we're still hoping for that.
I hope to God for these people. I mean...
If it would stop raining, it would help.
Oh, yeah. But I'm still... This has been going on for so long that...
And Dan Watkins, who is the acting manager of the road commission, is here. Do you want to take a moment to...
Hi, Dan.
Put you right on the spot?
Nothing like putting you right on the spot right away.
Right. So I am Dan Watkins. I am the interning, interim manager for Grand Travers County Road Commission. I've been at the road commission for over eight years now, coming up on nine here. My current role is as superintendent, so definitely looking forward to working with the townships, getting around in interim position. One directive I'm already working on is working with the staff, is I know we get a lot of township residents that call, and it's a back-and-forth situation. So I've instructed them that anytime a resident calls in, to direct it to one of our engineers, like Jim, and then our engineer will reach out to the township. So hopefully we can get this back and forth out of the way, and we can take care of our residents a little better, so...
Great.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. Anybody have any questions for me, or again, always available up at the road commission? So please feel free to reach out.
Thank you. Thanks, Dan. Thank you. Good luck.
Nice to meet you all.
Mr. Schiffer, did you want to take a moment to speak, or?
I think I'm good.
Okay. If you're gonna speak, you gotta go to the mic.
Yeah, so we're working on... I'm Jim Schiffer with the road commission. Been working with Chuck on three projects. One is Blue Star, the other is Ridgeview Court. Also working with your engineer, Jennifer, on coordinating possible water main work with that road project. And of course, the Jefferson Avenue, which is part of the consent calendar debate. So the road commission has basically approved execution of this contract with Almer's contingent on the township support. And so you've got that tonight, so we'll get that contract inked tomorrow.
Great. Awesome. Great. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jim. All right. That brings us to item D under new business, consideration of adopting early voting site at the charter township of Garfield Hall, Resolution 2023-29T. Laney, would you like to introduce this?
Yes, so with the passing of proposal two, we have to have established an early voting site for Garfield Township. And we're doing it here at Garfield Township. All seven precincts will vote here in one precinct.
Where are you gonna have this?
We're thinking in the Figer Room.
Okay. Because I was just wondering if you're having problems with any other meetings or anything like that?
No, no, yeah, because it's the nine days, so...
Right.
We're going to do it in that room. We're gonna get it set up, be a little more secure back in here.
Right.
We're actually gonna have to put a lock on the door. There's all sorts of regulations to secure the site, so I'd like to have it in one room where we could lock the door.
Right.
Make sure everything is secure every night.
And five of those nine days are days where closed.
But I will be here.
Somebody's gonna have to be here.
That would be our clerk.
Do you think I motion on this?
Yes, I do, please.
I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 2023-29-T, adopting early voting site.
Support.
We have a motion and support. Motion is Schmuckel, and who is the support?
Dool.
Dool?
Dool.
Any questions, comments?
Dool, Chris.
A roll call vote, please.
Schmuckel?
Yes.
Dool?
Yes.
Augustineelli?
Yes.
Barshaf?
Yes.
McManus?
Yes.
Corn?
Yes. And that brings us back to public comment. Anybody want a second chance at the microphone? Any other business to come before the board today?
Did you receive the MTA Legislative Action Alert today?
Yes. About the placing of wind and solar?
The state taking control of wind and solar and all that? Yeah. That's pretty interesting. When you read it, you know, it says the legislation moves the permitting of utility-scale renewable energy facilities from local level, which we went through a lot of that, John, member and planning, to the Michigan Public Service Commission, a ratings-setting regulatory state agency with no experience in land use or planning and zoning. What are they thinking?
Well, you got that. You got short-term rentals. You got mining.
Gravel mines.
Legislators in Lansing just want to do it all.
Don't you wonder if they're trying to get rid of the local-level government?
Can't, but...
Apparently, they don't get as many contributions from local government as they get from utility companies.
It's amazing.
They don't... Or gravel miners, or realtors who want to sell more short-term rentals.
There are them.
So it's money.
Yeah. I just thought it was interesting when I was reading it, because I'm like, wow, there goes all of our ordinances we made out the window if this passes.
Yeah. I don't think it's gonna pass. I don't think it's got legs, but our people have indicated they're not backing it, so...
Good.
We'll stay in touch.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Any other business? If there are no objections, we will stand adjourned.